The City Council to order Tuesday, February 17, 2015. Councilor Dean Attali, would you lead us in a salute to the flag, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
President Hay.
Here.
Councilor Bean.
Present.
Councilor Boishman.
Present.
Councilor Beazall.
Present.
Councilor Sark.
Here.
Councilor Dean Attali.
Here.
Councilor Green.
Here.
Councilor Joseph.
Here.
Councilor Caddy.
Here.
Council Tran.
Here.
We allow of the public forum, anybody wishing to speak on any matter on the agenda may do so for not more than two minutes. If you're addressing public hearing conditions, you will have an opportunity to speak at that time. Please approach the Senate table and identify yourself by name and address for the record and the item number on the agenda you are addressing. Does anyone wish to speak? Mr. Commissioner.
Thank you, and hello again. I'm Lenny Laxo, DPW Commissioner.
Nobody knows why you're here, Lenny.
I'd like to speak, well, order number 29-15, that requests another $200,000 for the snow and ice budget. So far this year, we've committed about $995,000, less the $20,000 credit from the treasurer for the parking garages, so that nets us out at $975,000, which puts us in the red about $22,000 or so, due to the extreme amount of snow that we have. We're widening the streets, clearing intersections, and plowing sidewalks. This week, we have some assistance from Mass DOT contractors, courtesy of MIMA. You know, after talking with us, they decided that was a better way to go than National Guard. So we've made a lot of good progress since yesterday, and they'll be here for the rest of the week. They originally said it would be only two days, but today they agreed to keep them on for the entire week, which is a good thing for us. So we'll get a lot of work done before school is back in session next week. We've received really good cooperation from police, fire, and the school department, and, you know, have to thank the guys again. They've put in a lot of long hours over the past few weeks, and they've done a great job. So if we can...
Motion for suspension on 29-15.
Second.
Motion, and a second, for suspension on 029-15. All those in favor of suspension?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous.
Would you want to be adopted?
Second.
Motion, a second, to adopt 029-15. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Laxo.
Thank you.
Before we move forward anywhere else, I was remiss when I called the public forum. Before we get started, councilors, this week, we had the passing of a true resident of Fitchburg, somebody who's spent endless amount of time and energy throughout his lifetime doing everything he could to make Fitchburg a better place to live, and being a good neighbor and good friend to all those who reside in Fitchburg. Former Councilor Tom Conry passed away, and if I could ask for a moment of silence on his behalf, I would appreciate it. Thank you. He will be missed. Anyone else wishing to speak at the public forum? If all have been heard, we will move to the report of the committee on records. Councilor Green.
Yes, the minutes from the last council meeting are correct and in order.
Motion to accept the committee on records report.
Second. We have a motion, a second, to accept the committee on records report. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Appointments Committee, Councilor Bean.
Mr. President, the Appointments Committee met tonight. We had five new appointments. They were Laura Casey, a member of the Disability Commission, her terms expire February 1, 2016. Stephen Twining for the Historical Commission, his terms expire February 1, 2017. We had an associate member of the Planning Board, Aaron Turigny, approved for terms expired January 1, 2017. And the last one was a member of the Energy Commission, Patrick Prince. His terms expire April 1, 2017. They're all unanimous.
Move that the Appointments Committee report be accepted.
Second.
Motion, a second, that the Appointments Committee report be accepted. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you, Councilor Bean. Communications from Her Honor, the mayor. Dear honorable councilors, effective March 9, 2015, I hereby appoint and ask for your confirmation of the following individuals as student police officers for the city of Fitchburg. Paul C. Theodello, 66 Village Crossing, Fitchburg, Mass. Kenneth M. Barnes, 25 Brigham Park, Fitchburg, Mass. Sincerely, Lisa A. Wong, Mayor. Dear honorable councilors, I hereby appoint and ask your confirmation of the following individuals as permanent full-time firefighters for the city of Fitchburg. Samuel Garcia, 137 Phillips Street, Fitchburg, Mass. Kenneth Holmes, 18 Garfield Street, Fitchburg, Mass. Sincerely, Lisa A. Wong, Mayor. Dear honorable councilors, I hereby reappoint and ask your confirmation of Ms. Joanna M. DeSantos of 167 Pratt Road, Fitchburg, as a member of the Human Rights Commission for a term to expire on May 1, 2018. Sincerely, Lisa A. Wong, Mayor.
Appointments.
Moving forward to the agenda. First item on the agenda is a special presentation from the Board of Park Commissioners regarding the Landry Arena. Members from the Board of Park Commissioners, come forward, please.
Mr. President, because of my employment with Fitchburg State University, I will recuse myself from the special presentation.
Counselor Mary. Go to Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, councilors.
My name is John Chudy. I'm a park board chairman. We'd like to make a short presentation.
John, if before you go on, if you would identify the other park commissioners, which one's on the record?
Go ahead.
Andy Roy.
Dave Madigan.
Jim McGrath.
Good gentlemen.
Jim McGrath is going to read a short letter, and then we'll open it up to questions.
President Hay, members of the City Council, thank you for giving us the opportunity to give an update on the park board's intentions to move forward with the legal issues that surround the agreement the city of Fitchburg has with Fitchburg State University on the property at Coolidge Park. The issues that the board is prepared to move forward with by starting with the defects on the transfer of the property to FSU. We will be going to Superior Court to file for a declaratory and equitable relief to stop FSU from removing and demolition of the Landry skating arena until we can get a judgmental ruling from a judge from the court on all the legal issues, on all the defects in the process that have got us to this point. The park boards feel strongly, and have felt this way since this issue began, that Mass General Law, Chapter 45, has been violated. Also, the parks board has asked repeatedly for help in this matter with three different city solicitors and two mayors, only to get nowhere. After FSU released a feasibility study that we thought was one-sided, and when it was published in a newspaper, the users of the ice rinks came forward to the parks board asking for help and not letting the use of the ice rink at the Landry Arena to be stopped. We have heard from many groups, including the area high school coaches, the different leagues, and all the different groups who need this facility to stay open during a three-to-four-month period for their programs to continue. The council was also forwarded these letters that were presented at the parks board meeting. You should be aware that if the Landry Arena is closed, a lot of these programs will be in jeopardy. Also, we believe there will be an economic loss for the area restaurants and hotels because the tournaments that were used now during the weekends will not take place. We also have met with the daughter of Kamalita Landry and Ken Gates, whose parents' names are on the buildings, both not pleased with what's going on with the use of these buildings, not to mention that the wishes of George and Alice Wallace were ignored. The Wallace family donated the monies for this great complex to be used for the residents and the area community. The board was willing to work with FSU to come to some kind of agreement that will work for everyone, only to be ignored by the college. The park board still feels that both the city and the college can use this building as a multi-use facility that includes the skating. It's our understanding that when this transfer took place, $2.5 million were also transferred to be used in both buildings. We do not believe that when this transfer took place, after being approved by the city council, that the intent was to close the ice rink. We believe the intent was to keep it open for the community. We also believe that the following violations took place in the transfer of the property. On the deeds and in the park board minutes, when each complex were built, wording was put in place that if each facility was not used for its intended purpose, the property will revert back to the parks board. On Tuesday, November 20, 2007, the Fitchburg Planning Board voted to grant the planning coordinator the authority to sign an acceptable ANR plan dividing the Landry Arena at the Wallace Civic Center from the balance of Coolidge Park. The map shows the property lines being moved without the approval of the parks board. This NAR plan was needed to finalize the transfer of the property to FSU, and we believe this is a violation of Chapter 45, Section 14, Mass General Law. And we discussed this issue with the city solicitor at our meeting on February 5, 2008. We also feel that FSU has violated parts of the lease by not opening the planetarium and not allowing the public to use the attached rooms. We could sit here for days, and we can debate this issue, but the bottom line is, until a judge rules on this, we will never have this issue put to rest. It is our hope that the city council will support us with our request to go to Superior Court to get this issue resolved, one way or another, and we intend to seek a declaratory judgment which cities support. But if not, we are prepared to go by ourselves, asking for help from the courts, and the possibility of getting an attorney. And that's the city of Fitchburg Parks Board.
Thank you, gentlemen. Councilors, the park commissioners asked to come and make a presentation, which they've done. Because of what they have said this evening, and because of an order that the mayor has put in, we've now entered into a new space or level, or whatever you want to call it, regarding the discussions between the city and the state university regarding the property down at the Civic Center in the Landry Arena. The city solicitor has advised me that if the body so wishes and wants to have an open and thorough discussion regarding the presentation that was made tonight, we can, if we wish, go into executive session for reasons of litigation, and then can have a much more wide-ranging discussion and get more information, if the council wants to. If not, you could simply ask some questions, and we can move on. If we are going to go into executive session, we can either do it immediately, or if the council so wishes, we can just wait, deal with the rest of the agenda, and then do it at the end of the night, so that people don't have to wait while we're in executive session. Councilor Bean.
Just a point of information, wouldn't it be better when we discuss any order, or the order for the outside council? Wouldn't that be the more appropriate time?
We could do it that way also.
I would suggest that.
Council Green. Am I allowed to ask a question now, or no? It doesn't have anything to do with legality.
I won't stop anybody from asking a question, but I just want you to know that if it's going to have to do with the legal aspect of it, we probably should go into executive session.
I'd like to ask my question.
Which Councilor Bean indicates we will move that we do when it comes to the order. But go ahead.
Okay. Does the Parks Board have plans in place on what to do with the Landry facility?
We have not got to that point yet, because if the decision comes back from the court that is not in our ballpark, then the city's allowed to let them do whatever they want to do. So we need to have the decision to find out, I'll use the old cliche, we're in or out. And that's all we can do right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Moving forward on the agenda, Finance Committee, Councilor Dean Attali.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance met last Tuesday, February 10, and took up the following: An order appropriating 200... Sorry. Yeah, I know, I lost my spot here. 10-15, Board of Health, to approve the $35 permit fee for the purpose of enforcing the unattended donation box regulation as adopted by the Board of Health on December 4, 2014. That was granted unanimously. And 22-15, Calvin D. Brooks, City Treasurer, to increase the fine for violating the snow emergency parking ban from $25 to $30 to keep it consistent with other fines and to relocate the fine in the city code from Section 169-35, Parking in Snow Emergencies, to Section 169-58, Violations and Penalties. That was granted unanimously.
Motion, a second, with the Finance. Could you take them separately? Council Bean.
Sure. I'll move that petition, petition 10-15 be approved as recommended.
Second. We have a motion, a second, that 10-15 be approved as recommended by the Finance Committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous.
Mr. President, I move that 022-15 be approved as recommended by the committee.
Second. We have a motion, a second, that 022-15 be adopted as recommended by the Finance Committee. Speaking to the motion, Councilor Caddy.
I'm in favor of this petition, however. I've had several discussions with the treasurer since the recent snowstorms. And other than if you have a computer and you're able to get online, the general public in Fitchburg has no idea where to park during a snow emergency. I've asked if he could make signage, and I'll refer back to the parking study in 2008, where they recommended that we have signage for our parking lots and garages, which we still don't have. But during the snow emergency, I had a conversation with him, and the mayor called the snow emergency at 7:00 PM. And I was told by the treasurer that nobody can park in the parking, up a parking garage deck until 7:00 PM. And if they park in the deck before 7:00 PM, they would be tagged and could be towed. My point is, we have three garages in Fitchburg. Other cities close by us have none. During the snow emergencies, there's very few places that we can park because the garages are closed, and there's no signage saying where you can park. So as much as I want to pass this tonight, I'm going to vote against it because I'm trying to force the treasurer into creating signage to show where you can park, and then also help our citizens in the empty parking garages so that we can get them off the street. The commissioner told us, he's not here, the commissioner told us our last meeting, he spends $5,000 an hour removing snow. If we can open up these parking garages and get our citizens inside the parking garages, we will save an enormous amount of money clearing the streets, and the streets will be cleared better than they are now. So again, if we're going to take a vote on this, I'm going to vote against it because I'm trying to convince the treasurer that we need to do something to help our citizens.
Council Boishman.
Mr. Council President, members of the council, I was going to ask that we pull this to and talk about it separate, and I want to increase the rate from $30 to the max, whatever the state law says is 50, and due to the simple fact that we have numerous violations of off-street parking in an emergency situation. I got pictures here of January 28, the snowstorm blizzard when we declared a state of emergency to government and the city of Fitchburg, and we get parking on Wallace Ave. We have a car parked on Clarence Street from the very first blizzard. You can't even see it. If a plow goes down, he's going to hit it, cause damages, and it's been there ever since. It's costing the taxpayer, the homeowner, tons of money because people do not want to move their cars. They don't want to move their cars. They want to keep them on the street and see how far they can push us to sea. I was up on Daniel Street one day, the day of the storm, and there was a truck parked on Daniel Street because he didn't want to use the parking lot, because he didn't want to get up at 7 o'clock when they blow the horn to move the cars. So he left it on the street. Yes, he got a ticket. I'm not going to dispute that. But just to drop your plow in a residential area, it's an average of $35 for a guy that you hired to come and drop your plow. We're spending over $100 to have the city go back to drop that same plow to widen the street because people don't want to take the rules and take them serious and leave their cars on the street. And the ones that are suffering are the homeowners, the homeowners like me, and I'm going to retire, and I'm going to be set on a fixed income, and I can't afford the taxes to keep on going up and up because an absentee landlord or somebody that does not want to provide parking for their tenants. It's not the city's job to provide parking. It's up to the people to find parking. And we're not doing a good job of it. And you can see it, the jobs are great. I get no complaints from my residents, and matter of fact, they think they're doing a good job. But how can you widen the street when you have a car like this that can't be pushed back? They cannot be pushed back because you cannot see the street. You can't see the car. So I would like to see it raised to 50, what the state law says the maximum. And I'll come to a compromise, because that's what politics is all about.
Speaking of the motion, I would agree with Councilor Caddy that we need to increase our efforts for signage, increase our efforts for education, and making sure people know where and what they can do with their vehicles when the parking ban is in effect. But having said that, and thinking that we need to do those things, I will support 022-15 for the increase that the treasurer has requested. Councilor Dean Attali.
The reason for the fee amount was because there was a study conducted by the treasurer's office that showed that the majority of cities and towns like ours were charging $30. So this was an opportunity to come up to par with the rest of those communities. With regard to education, there is a problem in the city regarding communicating to residents when there are parking bans being issued. I've had residents call me ad nauseam about checking the city website and not seeing it posted. Sometimes it is, sometimes it isn't. Again, the website, our crack website, is not serving what it should be, the purpose it should be serving. It should serve as an alert system for people to go to, to see designated areas throughout the city during a parking ban as to where they can park and what the rules and regulations are, so there is a clear understanding. Granted, not everybody has access to a computer, not everybody has access to the internet, but I'm willing to bet that's a small percentage that doesn't. Again, the website should serve as a one-stop shop for this information, and it does not. So we all know there are issues with that. That can be discussed at a later date with the appropriate people. Thank you.
Council Green.
Again, addressing this, I know that FATV has done a good job over the last couple of snowstorms, educating viewers about the conditions of the roads, moving the cars because of the winter storm parking ban. And I would probably venture to say that everybody probably has a television and can view that information on our local channels, and there's also an app for the phone called Code Red that's free that you can download that sends you automatic information about snow emergencies and parking bans. So I'm in support of this petition moving forward because I do think that it's important that people be held accountable for violating snow emergency bans, because it is crucial that the automobiles get removed from the street so the plow drivers can do the job set forth for them to do. Thank you.
Council Joseph.
I just want to say that I don't know what the cost of the reverse 911 call was that we got yesterday, but I appreciated that call, and I don't understand why we couldn't do that every time a parking ban goes into effect. It's in effect as of yesterday, and in effect until Friday. Everybody got the message that has a telephone, so I think that, I know everybody doesn't have landlines anymore, but at least it's another way of getting the information out there, and I appreciate it.
Councilor Beazall.
I know that the city sends out bills, real estate bills, all kinds of bills. I know that the Board of Health sends out the trash collection. All it takes is just putting a simple flyer in one of those envelopes and saying, these are the parking, when the parking ban's in effect, these are the places you can go and park. I think it's ridiculous that we're saying you can't come into this garage till 7 o'clock. I mean, honestly, open the garage up, get the people off the street, and just let them park there. I mean, the garages stay empty most of the time anyways. No one's going downtown Fitchburg to shop during a blizzard. Get the cars off the street, let people park. I'm in favor of this petition. I think what we have is two separate issues, and I just hope that common sense on the parking prevails. Thank you.
Council Kuchmerich.
Thank you. I think, again, we do have two points here. One is that we need to hold people accountable, and we need to raise the fines to be equal to the neighboring communities. You know, I think this is something we should be doing, and I think Council Boishman certainly has a point in that, you know, we should explore whether or not, you know, if we need to raise it at a later date, the fee, because we are losing money every time the plow has to revisit an area because someone hasn't abided by the parking ban. The second point, though, is that I think certainly we are doing some things very well as a community in that, you know, the reverse 911 phone calls have been great. Some councilors are posting via Facebook, FATV is doing a great job. But there's other ways we can continue to reach out and engage our residents to make them better informed. And I guess that would be, you know, a challenge to myself, and a challenge that I'd ask that our treasurer and DPW work a little bit harder in exploring other ways that we might be able to get this information out to folks that might not have access to FATV or the internet. Thank you.
Council Bean.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I think it is two different issues. On the issue of the parking garage, I guess would be a petition by the council members to allow it to be opened at whatever times during snow emergencies. But getting back to the fine itself, I guess which is the crux of the issue is raising the fine up. I think it, I almost agree, I agree with Councilor Boishman. It may even be higher, because it really does cause a problem. It's a public safety issue, and it has to make sure that we're doing this on a fair and equal basis that we're giving out these tickets. I don't want to put the chief on the spot, but if I could, I wouldn't mind just asking the chief, do you have a sense of how many tickets go out during snowstorms, or are they focused on other things, too?
During the weekend, we issued some in the vicinity of 150 to 200 tickets. I saw the perfect pounding this morning. We towed approximately 25 to 35 cars over the weekend. We've had extra patrols out.
The 11 to 7 shift and the day shift since the snow emergency took a
The 11 to 7 shift and the day shift since the snow emergency took effect this week, so we've been pretty active as far as issuing tickets and towing vehicles.
Good, thank you.
Counsel Boishman.
You know, to make a job a lot easier for everybody, and since we're comparing communities, then we oughta really start thinking about going back to the old way. There used to be, come November 1st to April 1st, you park your car off the street. It makes his job easier. There's no phone calls to us councilors to say, is there a parking ban in effect tonight, or is there not a parking ban, because we don't have any website? The rules are right there. We put it right there in Clegg-on-Square, right there on Depot Street, right down on Main Street, right everywhere you wanna go and say, parking a van like we see in Leimester, starts November 1st, ends April 1st. Eliminates everybody's headaches, and when he goes around, the policeman, and they see a ticket, they see cars parked on the street in that period of time, we give them tickets. There's no headaches for anybody. We all know the rules then.
I would just like to say that I disagree with Counsel Boishman there. Counsel Caddy and myself years ago worked diligently to change how Pittsburgh dealt with the parking ban. I thought that having a parking ban from November through April, 120 or whatever days it was, for, on an average, 10, 12, 15 days of winter, was wrong and inappropriate and made a whole lot of people's lives a lot more difficult. So, we changed it so that we have a parking ban that is specific to when we have storms. Having said that, in the old days, when it was 120 days and somebody would get a ticket and they would call me, sometimes I would be sympathetic to them because they were getting a ticket on a time when there was no snow on the ground, or it didn't seem right or appropriate. Now that we've taken it and gone from 120 days to that 10, 12, or 15 days, and somebody decides to leave their car out and they do get a ticket or they do get towed, I'm really unsympathetic to them. They know what the rules are, they know what their obligations and their responsibilities are, and I don't have any problem with the police chief handing out 130 or 150 tickets last week and towing 25 or 30 people, and I'd like to even see those numbers to go up, because when the people do disregard the parking ban, they do cost the city a lot of money and create dangerous situations, which is a safety issue for many people because the streets aren't plowed, the sidewalks aren't correct, and it makes it hard for people to travel and walk. And so, when they do disregard it, I don't have great sympathy, and I think that they should be ticketed and towed in the appropriate manner.
We have a motion in second to adopt O-2215. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? One and two in opposition. Legislative Affairs Committee oral report. Counsel Joseph.
Legislative Affairs Committee met this evening at 6:00 PM. We had seven items on the agenda. 10614, Counsel Angelo Beal to change the wording in City Code 10, Section 3, 121, referencing Parks, Board of Parks Commission is as outlined in the enclosed petition. That petition was passed five to zero. 16814, Councilors Dean Tran, Clark, and Green to reconsider 12211 to eliminate healthcare benefits for city councilors, was amended to say reinstate healthcare as an option to city councilors as prior to petition 12211. That was defeated three to two. 27014, William Walsh, Pittsburgh Senior Senator, amend chapter three, section 143, City of Pittsburgh, Members of the Council on Aging was held in committee. 15814, Counsel Amy Green and Counsel Paul Boishman to ban all drop aid donation boxes in the city. They have a tendency to become drop-off dump sites and/or require the agency that has these dumpsters to be required to have a permit because of the recent process that was put forth by the Board of Health. This was given leave to withdraw, five to zero. 28918, Counsel Angelo Beal to designate members of the Park Commission as special municipal employees under the provision and match general law, Chapter 268A, was approved, five to zero. 30614, Councilors Michael Kuzmeric and Paul Boishman to amend ordinance 16986 with respect to a penalty and fine structure, was amended to include a fine of $25, was approved, five to zero. 22514, Councilors Angelo Beal, Marcus Dean Tally, and Amy Green to amend wherever applicable in the city code with respect to mayoral appointments of department heads referencing a six-month requirement as outlined in the petition. This petition passed four to one, and the meeting was adjourned at 7:17.
Was the community report accepted?
Second.
Motion in second that the Legislative Affairs Committee report be accepted. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Councilors, if we could go backwards a little bit, I aired earlier and jumped over O-2815, which is the annual report of the Office of the City Clerk for the year 2000.
Who's the report be waived and placed on file?
Motion in second that the reading of the report be waived and the report be placed on file in the city clerk's office. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous.
Mr. President, motion for suspension on 3015 and 3115.
We have a motion in second for suspension of the rules on O-3015. In order pursuant to Section 3-57 of the Code of City of Pittsburgh, John B. Barrett, City Solicitor, be authorized to engage special counsel to represent the city in relation to potential litigations concerning the Landry Arena. And O-3115, in order to appropriate $5,000, same to be charged against available funds accredited to law other legal expenses. We have a motion and a second for suspension of the rules on these two. Counsel Kuzmeric.
Mr. President, because of my employment status at the university, I'd like to recuse myself.
Same here, Mr. President. Counsel Clark?
Okay.
Speaking to the motion?
To suspend.
We have a motion in second for suspension on O-3015 and O-3115. Speaking to the motion of suspension, Counselor Dean Tally.
Counselors, I requested suspension, being Chair of Finance. I, first of all, I believe that this may be more appropriate to be discussed, may be more appropriately discussed at a council as a whole committee meeting or with the council as a whole here this evening. I mean, I would, my own personal preference is to talk about it now with the council as a whole, given the fact that the Parks Board is here, the attorney is here, and we can discuss, at the very least, you know, appropriating $5,000. I just, I don't believe it should go to finance. I believe this should be a whole council discussion, and since all related parties are here, including the college, why don't we discuss this now? So, that's my reason for making a motion to suspend. Thank you.
Counsel Caddy speaking to the motion to suspension.
Yes. I'd also agree with Counselor Dean Tally. This has been going on way too long. I'd hate to see this going over to another meeting. All the players are sitting here tonight, and I believe tonight would be the night we should be talking about it.
Counsel Joseph.
I would only ask if we are going to, if this is part of our strategy, which obviously is part of our strategy, on what we would do is just by hiring legal counsel means that we, that's part of a legal strategy, that I think that this is one of the things that should be discussed in executive session and not in open session. So, if we're going to, I would, if we're gonna do suspension of the rules, I would ask that we suspend it to the end of the meeting, when we can go into executive session and discuss it.
Counsel Bean.
I was gonna make the same suggestion, that since we are gonna be talking litigation issues, that we move into executive session, but if we could hold off to the end of the meeting, get through the agenda as we have it, we could go into executive session and come back in just for the purpose of adjournment.
We have a motion in second for suspension, speaking to the suspension. I will vote for the suspension, but I have concerns that Counselor Dean Tally and Counselor Caddy talked about that we have all the players here for discussion. In my opinion, we don't have all the players here for discussion, because it should not be an open discussion. It should be done in executive session, which would exclude some of those members. It is for the council to discuss, because it is litigation. And that's just my opinion, that it be executive session, it be the council, not all the other people who are present here this evening. Motion in a second for suspension of the rules on O-3015 and O-3115.
What are we, I just, I'm trying to figure out what we're suspending it for.
Just to bring it before us.
Just to bring it before us. You can decide what you wanna do with it, Counsel, if suspension passes. We have a motion and a second for suspension on O-3015 and O-3115. All those in favor of suspension?
Aye.
All those opposed? Yeah, before you, Counsel Bean.
Mr. President, I would make a motion that Order 30-15 and Order 31-15 be moved to the end of the agenda, and that the city council move into executive session, discuss strategy concerning the litigation with counsel concerning the Landry Arena, and the president declare that an open session could have a detrimental effect on litigation position of the city.
Second. We have a motion in a second that O-3015 and O-3115 be moved to the end of the agenda, at which time I would accept a motion to enter into executive session. All those in favor of moving them to the end of the agenda?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Somebody wants to tell the other councilors that they can come back in? Ordinance 01915, an ordinance amending chapter 161, section 54(c)(1), entitled Resident-Only Permit Parking Areas Tow Zone, as outlined in the enclosed ordinance, Snow Street, reference petition 27914, final reading.
Make a motion to send 019-14, 15 to final reading.
Second.
Motion in second that O-1915 be sent to its third and final reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
One in opposition. O-2015, an ordinance amending chapter 169, section 25 of the Code of City of Pittsburgh, entitled Parking Prohibited Certain Hours, as outlined in the enclosed petition, Lady and Norma D. Road, reference petition 30714, final reading.
Will it be moved to its third and final reading, ordained?
Enrolled and advertised.
Enrolled and advertised.
Second. We have a motion in second that O-2015 be sent to its third and final reading, ordained, enrolled, and advertised. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Petitions, O-3215.
With 32-15 through, including 34-15, be referred to respective committees?
I, can we hold out 3215 and 3315? One second. You wanna do them all separately, Counselor?
Yes.
As opposed to hold out? Okay. We will take O-3215. Counsel Marcus Dean Tally, to have an independent third-party market appraisal conducted of the BF Brown Building and property, and it has been suggested it be go to the council as a whole committee. Somebody make a motion on it?
Motion to give leave to withdraw.
Second.
We have a motion in second to give O-3215 leave to withdraw. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. O-3315.
Move to give leave to withdraw.
Second.
We have a motion in second to give O-3315 leave to withdraw. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. O-3415, Counsel Dean Tran, to create a database of business in the city for data mining. Our recommendation is it go to the council as a whole committee.
O-3415. We sent the council as a whole. We also sent a copy to Redevelopment Authority.
To who?
Redevelopment Authority.
Okay, councilors, who made the motion?
I made the motion, yeah.
Oh, I thought Michael made it. Is that okay?
Oh, did you make it?
Is that okay? We have a motion in a second that O-3415 be sent to the council as a whole committee with a copy going to the Redevelopment Authority. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Now, moving backwards, councilors, to O-3015 and O-3115. Counsel Bean.
President, I would move that the city council go into executive session, discuss strategy concerning the litigation with the council concerning the Landry Arena, and the president declare that an open session would have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the city, and that we, when we come back into open session, we, for the purpose only, for adjournment only.
Did you say both 3015 and 3115?
Yes.
Okay. It'll be a roll call vote. We'll declare that an open session could have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the city, announce whether the city will return to open meeting only to adjourn, and I have no idea what you're...
After the vote, if they go into executive session, they can make that determination and then decide whether you're gonna do this.
I can't remember.
How much time is anticipated the council be in executive session?
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Solicitor, should Counsel Clark and I recuse ourselves before or after the roll call vote?
Before.
Before, yeah.
Mr. President, I, because of my employment at the university, I recuse myself of the vote and discussion.
Counsel Clark. A motion.
Second.
In a second to enter into executive session on O-3015 and O-3115.
Just a point of clarification, Mr. President, through you, do we need to name the folks that'll be allowed in the chamber, or it'll just be the council members and the mayor? Or do we have to?
No, I believe you can ask anybody that's involved with it.
Right now, it's just the council and the mayor.
Per se, the Board of Park Commissioners.
Just the council and the mayor, okay.
We have a motion in second to enter into executive session on O-3015 and O-3115. It is a roll call, not to return to, to return to open session, only to adjourn. Roll call vote.
Should we include the park commissioners with us?
President Hay?
Yes.
Counsel Bean?
Yay.
Counselor Boishman?
Yes.
Counselor Beal?
Yes.
Counselor Dean Tally?
Yes.
Counselor Bean?
Yes.
Counselor Joseph?
Yes.
Counselor Caddy?
Yes.
Counselor Tran?
Yes.
It's unanimous. We are in executive session.
Mr. President, could we keep the Board of Park Commissioners with us?